So, good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Rikka. I'm the interim superintendent of schools. And because of reorganization, I am calling the Southern Berkshire Regional School District's school committee meeting number 1,693 to order at 6:02 PM. The first order of business is to reorganize. At this point, I will call for a motion to open nominations for members to serve as chair to the school committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So that was from Carl.
Second.
To Bonnie, thank you. All right. Sorry, I'm sorry. You could have sat right here and I would have heard you right here.
I'm just kidding.
No, everybody's fine. Roll call vote. Arthur Bataki.
Yes.
Kim Alcantara.
Yes.
Bonnie Silvers.
Yes.
Carl Stewart.
Yes.
Jim DePisa.
Yes.
Miguel Mier.
Yes.
Julie Hanem.
Yes.
Amy Bainbridge Jordan.
Yes.
I don't see Nancy. Just checking.
Not yet.
Okay, so she's absent. Okay. Now I am calling for a motion to nominate. So please name a nominee to be chair of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District's school committee.
I nominate Arthur Bataki.
There's a nomination by Julie for Arthur Bataki. Is there a second? There's a second from Kimberly Alcantara, who I heard this time. There will now be a roll call vote.
You have to ask for other.
Wait, wait.
You have to ask for others. Should ask if there are any other nominations.
Apologies. First time here. Thank you for coming. Are there any other nominations for chair for the school committee for this reorganization?
I have a motion.
Sir?
There are no other nominations?
There are no other nominations.
I move we declare Mr. Bataki to be the chair by acclamation.
Is there a second to that motion? That is second by Miguel. Is there any discussion for that? Hearing none, I will do a roll call vote. Arthur Bataki.
Yes.
Kim Alcantara.
Yes.
Bonnie Silvers.
What are we voting on? Whether we should do it by acclamation?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Carl Stewart.
Yes.
Jim DePisa.
Yes.
Miguel Mier.
Yes.
Julie Hanem.
Yes.
Amy Bainbridge Jordan.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. And at this point, since there is a chair, I will turn over the next set of duties to the chair and congratulate Arthur Bataki for his unanimous election.
Okay. Now we need the election of a vice chair. Is there a nomination?
I nominate Kim Alcantara.
Second. Seeing no other nominations? Roll call vote. Carl? Uh, yes. Kim?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Arthur, yes. It's unanimous.
Best of luck to both of you.
We're living here again this year.
Okay, we need to elect the secretary of the school committee, Dr. Brian G. Rikka.
So moved.
Oh, okay, I'll second. Roll call vote. Carl? Yes.
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Miguel? Julie?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Arthur, your vote?
And yes. I move to appoint Kami Lamica. I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly, as treasurer of the district.
Second.
I'm not making that decision.
That was Kim.
You get the next one.
Roll call vote. Carl? Kim?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Amy.
Arthur?
Question. Have we ever met Kami at the school committee?
She was here, I think, about a year ago. And then we just saw her briefly online. So, yes, she has. When she first started, she made her introductions and stuff like that. I don't think you.
I don't think I was on it that much.
No. No, I think it's actually been longer than a year.
I went back to last year's reorg and I'm like, oh, her name was there. I didn't even know who that was.
I think it's been two years then.
I think. I've never met her, so.
I've never met her.
Well, maybe we should meet her sometime.
But she's been on Zoom.
Just cuss.
Actually, yes. So I will make that invitation.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to appoint the law firm of Murphy and Mearon Murphy as district law firm. Carl? Yes. Kim?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Arthur, yes.
Move to nominate the clerk to the school committee, Michelle Castellano.
Second.
Carl? Yes. Kim?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Miguel? Julie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Arthur, yes.
I move to elect to the MD for the school district, Lisa Sylvia, Dr. Lisa Sylvia.
Second.
Carl? Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does Dr. Sylvia have an office within the district?
Oh, yes. She's in Great Barrington at McAney.
Oh, so it's not within the district.
No.
Oh, no. But I can tell you, as the health services director, that most of our children receive their pediatric services from McAney.
There's no pediatrician in our five towns.
I just want, as a point of information, that's all. Thank you. Did I say yes? I think I did. If I didn't, yes. Okay. Kim?
Yes.
Bonnie? Jim?
Yes.
Miguel? Julie?
Yes.
Arthur, yes. Standing reports. Can I have a motion to approve minutes? So moved.
Second.
Do we have count?
Yeah, all two. So we have to take them separately. So you want to start with October 30?
Sure. Yep. October 30.
So these are approval of the minutes. I'm from October 30.
I have a question. It's on page six. The paragraph explaining who would be on the committee. And where it says five community members? I thought it had been described as five select board members or their designees. And then there was a discussion of community after that? So I just was looking to clarify that.
It's five. It's five, five ad hoc or five select or five school committee members.
Right.
Five select board members or their designees, five community members. And then five people making up between administration and staff.
So we'd have 25 people?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Five staff and their faculty, five select board and five.
Yes.
Select.
But there's an extra category.
What's the extra category?
Community, right?
The community.
I'm taking that out.
Yeah, I think it was a double.
Select, so it'd be like community either there or their designees community.
Right.
That's what I was trying to.
So like one from each of the towns within our five districts.
Okay, thank you.
Our five district towns.
All right, so select board, designee. I have one other question. I'm not sure what page it is, but it's number 13. Oh, page seven. And it's not really, it's sort of maybe nipping. SBREA is arguing that faculty is working. Could we say they are stating that they are working rather than sounding argumentative?
Sure.
Is there a problem with that?
No, I think that's fair.
Stating?
Yeah, stating.
And on page eight, 15, there we no future agenda items.
Yeah, I think I have one or two little type.
Is that Irish? Is that Irish?
Italian.
Italian.
It's that too, Art.
Michelle, I have two others like that. I'm not going to tell you right now. But there's an and 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 something that, yeah. Very, very much.
So motion to approve as amended?
Second.
Okay. Carl?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, yes, Arthur, yes. School committee minutes for November 5th. Move to approve. Oh, I have to withdraw my motion.
I was just looking at that.
Yeah, I have to withdraw my motion. I wasn't here.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The minutes of November 5th. Special school committee meeting.
Seeing none? Carl?
I had my hand up and then they changed it. Just a correction on page two, number four. Our legal counsel is S E L, not C I A. Wrong counsel. I'm sure it was a auto thing. That's all.
Carl?
abstain.
Abstain? Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bonnie? Jim?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Thank you. Arthur, yes. Okay. One other thing before we go any further. This is school committee meeting 1,693. For the record.
I think I said that when I started myself. I hope I did.
You did.
I hope I did. It was in my script. I hope.
You did.
Your script.
Okay, I'm just double checking.
Thank you.
Okay. Receipt of correspondence?
None.
Enrollment report?
Contained within.
Is this one family?
I don't know the answer to that question.
What was that?
We are up by seven.
Yeah.
Yep.
Up by seven.
Arthur? Yes. I have a motion to make with respect to something that is not on the agenda for tonight, but I think it should be. And let me make the motion and we'll see if it gets seconded and approved. I think I, and I assume the rest of the members of the school committee recently received a complaint regarding non-production or alleged non-production of minutes. There, well, I move, and when we have discussion, I think I can make clear why. I move that the school committee in open session consider that complaint and take action with respect to it this evening.
I second it.
First, we have to amend the, we have to amend the agenda.
That's what the motion is, to amend the agenda.
Well, the motion is to amend the agenda, one. Let's get that out of the way. Let's get that out of the way first.
I second the amendment of the agenda.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, Arthur. Okay, Carl? Yes, on the amendment, yeah.
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bonnie? Jim? Nancy?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And Amy? And Arthur, yes. Okay, Carl?
Are you taking that motion now?
Yeah, so now I. It's on the table for now.
No, it was just amending the agenda. So you're amending it for right now.
Yeah. Now I moved to, yes. Okay. Can we, when we get to policy, can we wait and put it in your slot for policy? Absolutely. It's fine with me. Not a problem. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about enrollment? Carl snuck in before I gave him my hand. You were quick, Carl. I'm wondering when we might be able to get a breakdown of like school choice numbers and understanding that. Is that something maybe next month within?
Absolutely.
It's not, October 1st, it isn't certified until January, so I don't get those numbers until February.
Oh, I thought it was all done as of October 1.
It's submitted. We don't get those numbers until like middle or end of January.
Oh, all right. Well, let's do it then.
Yeah.
I just happen to think about it because we're talking about it.
Yeah, we have to still our information by then.
Got it.
But it doesn't get processed. Like I can give you the choices out.
Maybe. Well, that's okay. Well, let's wait and do it.
I can give you choices in. I can give you choices in, but I can't give you choices out. I think that's how it works. I can't remember.
Well, we can wait till.
But I can give you all the numbers.
I just think it would be nice to have a detail on that sometime.
Okay, thank you. There is no student representative tonight and there's no student spotlight. So we will move to public comment. Hello? Can you state your name and?
Victoria Alden, town of Sheffield. So I'm a resident of the town of Sheffield. I'm a high school educator. But I'm here tonight as a representative of the E-Board of the Southern Berkshire Regional Education Association. Looking ahead at your agenda, we are looking for clarity on items 12A and 12C and request transparency regarding the vote to approve the consulting work agreement for Dr. Regalbido, our former superintendent. We also noticed that you're voting to approve a new business management services contract with Open Architects this evening. We would like clarification on the consulting agreement with Dr. Regalbido. We'd like to know what specific tasks or services Dr. Regalbido will be providing and why we need to incur an additional cost of a consultant at this time. We're asking that you provide the school community with details on the terms of both Dr. Regalbido's consulting agreement as well as Open Architects this evening.
Amy Murray. I am here as a taxpayer living in Sheffield. I just actually have one comment. I was perusing this flyer that looks like it's for an advertisement for the superintendent. I happen to teach map skills and I was just looking back from when I was a third grade teacher of the Sheffield, of the map of Massachusetts. I would love, as a person who looks at things visually, for the word Springfield to actually be put on the other side of where the star is for the simple, for the simple reason is that when we're having people advertise and look at this, this makes Springfield look a heck of a lot closer to the Berkshires than they really are. So if it was put on the other side, I think it would be less confusing for people who really do not know that you're looking at an hour and 10 minutes, the way I drive, to get there. And I think it would make it look a little bit easier on the eyes. I don't know if it's gone out yet, but this is just, again, my first look. I really would move that word to the other side so that people knew where we were. But very minor detail, just something to think about.
Sit in on my packet?
Yes. Separate, Bonnie.
It's separate, man. It was separate.
Sure, on the other side.
Now, didn't Luis make this?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Bruce Schreiber. I'm a selectman in Orford. I just have a request. As part of the superintendent search committee, you're asking for representatives from each select board. I met with a number of the other select board representatives and they had not heard of that. We have, we were informed of that. My request is that you make sure that the select boards are informed of the request.
Thank you. Help me to go find others.
Okay, seeing no more public comment? Business managers report.
So you have in your packet the approval of warrants. We have no grants, but there is a gift donation to the SBRSD culinary program in the amount of $250.
One more time.
Oh, sorry.
We have to approve. Can I have a motion to approve the warrant? Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none? Carl? Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie? Jim?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And Arthur, yes. Okay. Move to accept the gift?
Second.
Anybody have any questions? Carl? Yes. Kim?
Yes.
Bonnie? Jim?
Yes.
Nancy? Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Arthur, yes.
I'd like to suggest as a committee, write a letter of thanks to Marie for her thanks, if that's not something that already. Marie?
No.
What's that?
It wasn't Marie who donated.
Oh, I thought it was her name.
We should do a letter of thanks.
Well, then that was last time, right?
I did for the last one. I wasn't aware of this one, but I will for this one as well.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have no budget transfers? Okay, chairman's report. So after going to the conference, which was, it was awesome. You always learn whether you like it. When you go to the presentation, you find out, well, this really wasn't what I thought it was going to be. But no matter what, you always learn something. And all the presentations you go to. So I, it was very, it was good. It was very informative. The other thing I'd like, I'd like to thank the play on Friday. I came Friday, Kim and I came home, flowed home to get to the play on Friday night. It was absolutely awesome. I just can't believe how these kids remember all these lines and.
Especially Shakespeare.
Yeah. I can't even remember my own name half the time, never mind reciting all of that. So it was just, I'd like a round of applause because it was just absolutely.
I think we should acknowledge the music department and the person that puts that all together and keeps all those little munchkins organized.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you.
And pass it along to Ms. Naggio as well.
Yes, I will.
I'd like briefly, if anybody that was at the conference would like to speak, one at a time? Go ahead, Bonnie.
I've gone to a number of the conferences. And this time, there were at least two workshops in each session that I wanted to go to. I think they did a great job putting this conference together. I discussed this both with Amy and with Julie. I think there should be a way that individually we submit like very, very brief reports, summary of some of the ideas that came up during the conference that we could pursue, whether it's speakers or initiatives. And I'm not great at doing it, but I, you give us a time And I'm not great at doing, but I, you give us a time you'd like to have this, if everybody wants to do it, I think it, it would be beneficial, since we didn't totally do it ahead. And I have to second what you said about Shakespeare. I did the Mad Dash on Saturday, and it's unbelievable, and I cannot tell you how many graduates will put in their statements later on, how Shakespeare was among the most important experiences of their high school career. So, I love that we continue to support it. I love that whether it's through the cultural council, legal fund, whatever, that we get additional support. We should keep on asking for it and earning it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that suggestion, anybody that had, just send me all your suggestions, and we'll go from there. Oh, I don't know who's next.
I'll say something. They got their hands up first, though.
Go ahead, Kim.
I was just gonna say, they actually fought outside the box this year, which was really impressive, because there were topics that weren't, although I did, you know, sit in like the special education updates and things like that, the normal things you want to know as your district progresses. But I found the agricultural farm-to-table, using the kitchen and the students to grow their own food, composting, the whole thing. And I know years ago in Mount Everett, we had that program, and I personally would like to take that info and start it again to, you know, give our kids a different aspect in their life.
Okay. Nancy is ahead of me.
Uh, my soapbox. I went mostly to, and I will bring this up again in the newsletter piece, but I went mostly to budgeting stuff, and I have to say, I have my shirt in the car. If there's a break, I'll bring it. But anyway, there are 38,411 rural students. There are 67 rural school districts. We got $12 million this year. Last year, we got 16, I thought it was 17 million, but it was 16 million. We're supposed to be getting 60 million a year. There is a lot of work being done, and I just really totally was relieved to see how many people came to the meetings that were talking about ways to get in touch with legislators, who the legislators are to get in touch with, both about rural funding, but also about student outcome, or whatever the SOA thing is called. So, anyway, Opportunity Act. I, I, they did a really good job, and I think they did a phenomenal job with allowing rural schools to speak out, and I was appalled at the misogynistic dismissal of, if I heard one more time, "You don't really understand" when, when points were being, yeah, thank you, that was my look, when points were being made, to, to admittedly far east legislators. I just wanted to, I finally at one meeting stood up and said, "Just that, I'm tired of misogynistic discrimination." And I got the equivalent of total applause when the woman who's, when the, I think it's one superintendent's from up around Peru, big hugs, you know, I, she said, she was like, "I'm not allowed to say that, but you are." So, anyway, that was great. I was, I, again, just really, really, really appreciate seeing how screwed all this. But yeah, it was great. I think we're gonna miss Jason.
Carol's next.
Yeah. I believe, this has been done in the past at the MASC, the joint MASC, MASs conference every year, that most, if not all, of the sessions
All right.
are videoed, and there's a very quick answer to whether they are, and two, if they are, could they be made available? And I think that Glenn Kutscher clearly knows the answer to that, and so, and I'll do it if, no one, I mean, I've known Glenn for a very long time, I've been to a number of the meetings, and I, I don't think there should be a requirement that members of the committee watch these, but if anybody wants to, sometimes there's a conflict, that is, there's one session and a conflicting session, you want to go to both, and you can't. So, that, that's an opportunity for us to, to be able to, to either listen, listen and/or watch those sessions.
Most of the, of the small individual ones were not
Yeah.
recorded. However, everybody was posting their material.
Most. I actually reached out to one, and I asked for his PowerPoint, and it was about AI, and he said his company was not allowing him to post. But I, I did on the app, I have on the app the ones that I went to, the ones that do have slides that I'd, I'd be happy to share with you, and, and anybody.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you could have.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Yep, yeah. I just want to share on a, on a practical note, a couple of the workshops that I really liked the best were at the very end, which was really hard on a Friday. But there was one about onboarding new school committee members that was really great. And I've got their slides, got information, and, you know, as we talk about handbooks later, you know, when we go through that, if there's not sections, but it, given that we could see a large turnover in the school committee next year, having something like that in place might be a good idea, good on open meeting law, and the rural aid one that we went to was amazing, and we have those slides. But that, that particular session, if we had a condensed version, it would be worthy of, of showing those slides. And then it was that good and that well done.
Well, I think, yeah.
And it tied to that Chapter 70 webinar that went on for three hours last night. So, that, and that was a really interesting listen as well. But, yeah, so there was a lot of really good stuff.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring some of that up on the...
Okay, we'll get to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Amy?
Maybe this is what you're gonna talk about, Nancy, but also jumping on the rural schools in Chapter 70's bandwagon, I was really impressed at the webinar to see students speaking.
That's what you mean.
Mm-hmm.
Or Tuesday night.
And what I kept thinking to myself is, how much of our community knows about this? I was not privy to it prior to being part of this committee, and as we all know, I am the newest member to this committee. And to learn in such a short amount of time how incredibly important this is, I think that one of our priorities should really be getting this information out to the community.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's 14B, or 12B, no, 14B.
We could do a forum, and maybe we could get a couple of people to present it.
That's, let's, let's...
And do it on Zoom.
Let's, let's not talk about it right now. We've got a long, long meeting.
Brian, I think we created your next newsletter.
Yes.
Whatever we decide in terms of, you can do the blast for us.
Absolutely. Yeah, and there's also information, I'll get to it in the community relations.
Okay, there's one more thing. They definitely are moving.
Oh, good.
It will not be there next year.
Danvers, next week, next year.
Is it? Yeah. I don't know. I felt like I was staying in my grandmother's guest room.
By the way, isn't that...
Oh, yeah.
You were at the other hotel, so it's late.
Yeah, I did. It was, the wallpaper was peeling. I don't mean to complain, but it's like...
But just renovated.
No, they were not renovated.
Amy had to do Zoom meetings in her bathroom.
Yes. Because it was that bad.
Okay.
Carrie, I don't know. We couldn't plug anything in. The, the things would fall out of the wall.
Next year is a week earlier, and it is at Danvers, because that was announced on that Friday night.
Well, that's good.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
All right, I have a number of dates to share with all of you. I think we mentioned to you last time that, or at least Sarah did, she's not here tonight, that we were invited to present, or that we were invited to the academic success celebration, noting that our math, MCAS scores for grades three through eight have reached pre-pandemic levels. We received the news this week that we have been asked to present. And so, we'll be presenting with Jane Schur, Lindsay Brown, and Sarah, who put together a draft PowerPoint that she's gonna share with our whole faculty and staff to ask for feedback. That's gonna happen on Tuesday, December 2nd. That's in Marlboro. We'll share, obviously, the presentation when it's finalized with everybody, after we get feedback from our teachers. A reminder to everybody that our senior lunch is the Friday after we return from the Thanksgiving break at 12, on 12:05. Please sign up at the Sheffield Senior Center. And then finally, our community night, the next conversation we're having about Burke Studios, otherwise known as Transcend, will be 12:09 at 5:30 here in the library, and there will be a hard stop at 6:45, because there is a concert to follow that we encourage everybody who comes to that community night to attend. And then finally, in my newsletter tomorrow, I will be reminding and sharing with all of our families that we have made an adjustment to the calendar. Four, six, April 6th is now a half day for students, and a half day PD for our faculty and staff, and our last day of school is June 16th.
I just want to, so instead of telling Jesse's assistant that we'll go into the senior, go through the senior center?
No.
No.
Not for you.
Not for all of you.
Oh, okay.
That's for, it's for our general public, right?
Okay.
We'll still, we'll still save some.
So, we'll still stick with the, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah's not here tonight?
Correct.
So, we'll move right on to, uh...
Student services.
Student services, yeah.
Um, good evening. I'm gonna keep it really brief. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you all for your continued service and support for the district and the programs that we have here. I do have a written report. I won't share it tonight, you can read it, but it's a kind of a breakdown of some of the services that we provide and what's happening currently within the Department of Student Services. And I'll leave it there, so you can move on to this hefty agenda.
So, are you going to...
I'm gonna give it to her to share with you.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's already written.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, vote to approve business meeting from its services contract for Open Architecture.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion. Go ahead, Bonnie.
I really appreciate the amount of work that was put in by Brian and by our chair and vice chair to address a really critical issue. And I know our towns will totally appreciate this, as well as more than one of us as special appointees have been spoken to by our select board. And my understanding is from questioning Dr. Rika on this, is that they have been more than responsive.
Indeed, TJ, who's our contact, is on the second, from, second from the right up there on our Zoom tonight.
And, and good, then I will add to it, this is probably the, the most critical issue to our five towns in terms of their support for the school district. I, I think there are no individuals in any leadership position in our five towns, plus thousands of others, who know the difficulties we face. And obviously, this goes back before you, but our hope is that the response we now get will bring us back to the point where our communities can concentrate on what we're doing academically, socially, everything to encourage the growth and success of our students, and not have to question the condition of our finances, which has been a major issue for all of us on the school committee, including this accounting-challenged member. So, lots of good luck, and from what I've heard so far, we have, I'm getting nods here, positive response.
I just wanted, may I?
Yep.
The reason Open Architecture, if anybody would like to know, was hired was the previous accounting firm was failing to do their job in a timely fashion, which led to a lot of misinformation, uncertainty, and wrong things that affected our district. And so, they, they had to be replaced with somebody that, you know, could help us out of where we are, and to get our certifications, or our grants, our fundings, our transfers done in appropriate, timely fashion, because that wasn't happening for two years. And it's nothing that the previous superintendent had, it wasn't anything to do with the school committee, it was the outside accounting firms' issue. So, you know, we have rectified that, and we are looking to move forward, and pure transparency, clarity, and TJ is gonna help us with that.
Not that there's a minor burden on you.
I think it's important, just for the record, to add that they will be managing fiscal year '26
Yes.
And developing our fiscal year '27 budget.
Budget.
Doing, just, just to put that out there for the record.
Correct.
Yeah. Looking forward to working with them.
TJ, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, I'll make a brief introduction, if that's okay, for the chair. So, my name's TJ Plant. I've been with Open Architects for over two years, but I've done 25 years in state municipal and school finance experience. So, our firm has two sides to the company. One is the finance side, which, which we're engaging in with a bunch of daily or weekly or monthly reports, whatever the committee decides and superintendent asks for. And then we have dashboards for student learning, and attendance and behavioral issues if there are, like, I mean, mash it, we mash it all up into a report for each student, and if you need to print like guidance, you just put a report for a student on the student side. But my side is more the consulting side, where we come in and provide advice, advisory services for all things related to school finance, transportation, reconciliation of bills, you know, talking to the town finance folks. I, I worked for the city of Springfield for a long time, and I used to speak both languages, the town finance directors and the school committee, superintendent's desires, so we can kind of get into, looking at Prop 2 and a half, if there are an issue raising the revenue, that we need the needs of the district, we can be involved in all of that. But our goal is to get in there, get up and running, and Brian, superintendent, I think I'll have for you tomorrow, a list of all of our needs to get, get in there
Excellent.
For you and your IT team. And then, once we get it, so what we do is we get infinite visions from the backend and from the frontend. And the difference between that and the backend, we just grab all the data and we store it, and then we run what could be daily dashboards for everyone here to go in and look in daily to look at the changes in expenses and revenue. And I'll come, you know, and show, and show the committee what it all looks like at, at another date. But, so it's gonna, it could be daily updates, it could be weekly updates, it could be monthly updates, but we grab the data organically with the raw data, as we call it, and then we just throw it into our database. And then we have a finance dashboard, an HR dashboard, like, we have all this stuff that we do, like, a daily finance briefing. So, presumably, superintendent could go in every day and say, "Okay, what did happen?" And we update it every night, overnight. And then you have a clear picture into your spending habits, and if there's an issue, we flag it, and do all that. We're also gonna go end the gems and close out some grants, that there's grants that need to be closed out. So, I mean, it's gonna be assessing students that we're doing for the consulting side, probably 12 school districts. For the dashboard side, probably like 70 or more. I mean, that might even be more, because we get that. So, that's just a, you know, quick synopsis of what we do, but I'm happy to take any questions or... Can I recognize you or the chair?
Yeah, I'll recognize. Bonnie?
Approximately two years ago, maybe it's three at this point, the school committee voted that they wanted to receive a quarterly report where we could see expenditures against projections for the year, and have an understanding where we are. Should we, one, we haven't received it.
He'll be doing that.
No.
So, my question is, should we be asking for it? Will you be able to produce that for us and to explain it at a meeting?
I, yeah, we've already asked for that.
Yeah, we are.
Good.
So, just, I will tell you, the community, we created a special report with the school committee and another community that they asked for by Desi Cook-Funkchuk, and so we created that for, for them, and we gave access to them to go in daily if they wanted to. But we also produced it in a report format for it to go on the website and all that stuff. So, there's definitely a, a way to do that, and it could be monthly, it could be quarterly, as frequently as the committee wants, because once, once we set it up and have the data, and, and we can, we can move quickly. Like, we can do in probably an hour or two what others apparently haven't been doing, so.
Thank you.
I, I do want to point out for the committee, TJ was planning on coming not only to visit with folks in our office today and be here in person, but he has COVID, so we suggested that he stay home.
Oh, feel better. Yeah, we don't want you here, sorry.
Nancy had asked me to remind everybody here, I did solicit three bids, as is required, and Open Architects was the only affirmative response, so, yeah.
Amy?
I don't know if this question is for TJ or for us, but he mentioned a consulting and a dashboard side, and I'm wondering, what are we using? One, the other, both?
We're using the consulting side.
The consult, the finance consulting.
With financial dashboards.
Right, we're getting financial dashboards, we're not doing the student dashboard.
You don't have to do the student dashboards. I mean, you could get them if you want. I think you guys have, what, 600 something students?
Correct.
But, so this isn't gonna require extra for teachers?
Yeah. Don't tell my boss that, he's watching.
We won't, we won't tell him. We won't tell Seth.
I can't thank you enough, and
Agreed. Agreed.
I'm looking so forward to this that you can't even imagine.
Agreed.
So, thank you very much, and we'll be talking soon.
Happy to, happy to help. Let me know what you need.
Thank you, TJ. Feel better.
Thanks, TJ.
All right, I'll talk to you guys.
Bye-bye.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye.
So, we now can vote to approve?
Yes.
We have the motion on the floor.
Carl?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Enthusiastically.
James?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Arthur, 100%. Yes.
Excellent.
The reorganization of all the subcommittees, the list is attached.
I'd like to stay where I'm at.
So, basically, you guys usually take it home and decide if you want to do here, unless you want to decide right now who wants to be on the committee and remove themselves from the committee, or?
Anybody have any?
I'm prepared to stay where I am.
I would like to stay. I think, does anybody want to move?
Yeah, let's, let's go with that one. Does anybody want to move?
I'll speak up. I would, if you need, because hopefully, once Michelle and Sarah help, we will have minutes for personnel and negotiations. I believe that my work will be much less, so I would be happy to go on Superintendent Evalua's...
Would you like to chair it?
Or the policy, because I've never been on policy.
I would love to have you on Superintendent Evalua.
Yeah, but I've done it.
I know.
So, yeah, so if that's okay.
It's fine with me.
All right.
And if you really want to be on policy, how many, we have Carl, myself.
There's four on policy now.
There's four.
Okay, I, I don't need more than one.
You don't need both, but...
Right. I like visiting and watching what goes on with policy. I could still do that.
Perfect.
All right?
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
I have... Okay, Carl. Well, I'm on, the, the one that I would like not to be, not to be on is the negotiation subcommittee. However, since we just completed negotiations, and we have a three-year, we have three-year contracts.
Now's your time.
That, and my term expires a year from now. I think there'll be nothing, I don't have to be on.
Did you not hear what I just said?
No.
We're done.
Okay. All we really need at this point is to get all of the minutes approved and gone through. So, that's the, the, unless somebody comes up with a new MOA or whatever, that's the only work the, the negotiations committee has left. We have to close that out. So, I would prefer, since you have the history, if you could stay on it until we go... So I would prefer, since you have the history, if you could stay on it until we go...
Yeah, no, I, I, okay, I, I, I'm sorry that I, that I was daydreaming or nightdreaming or whatever I was doing. The, the, my only, the caveat that I have is that I am now being importuned by the town mothers and fathers have offered to run again in 2026. And they, and, and that's going to make me one of the oldest school, if not the oldest school committee member in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I said, they said, we, we, you, we're, you're our choice, even if you are deceased.
Oh, goodness.
Well, you're enjoyable while you're alive.
Well, so, so...
So I don't know about the other part.
Anyway, so I don't want to be involved, but I, I, so I'll withhold my, my request to be off the, that if, if...
Okay, right.
For some circumstance.
Yeah, we understand. Okay, and when this is done, you, we'll be off, okay?
Maybe.
Okay, so everybody...
So what, what is this community health advisory team liaison? It's blank.
Oh, it was, it's me, actually.
Oh, was it you? Okay, well, okay.
I did it during COVID.
Yeah, it's, it's just a, it just, if it ever needs to be tapped again, it shouldn't be blank, but... Yeah, it was, it was me.
It was you, okay. For a number of years.
And then I took it over from Bonnie.
Okay.
It really is nothing.
Well, well, I...
Until activated and necessarily needed.
As long as we don't have another pandemic in the near future.
Correct.
Okay, but I just was noting that it was blank, so I'm glad to know that you're actually in there.
Yeah.
And also, what happens, this is a community group.
Yes.
That if they reactivate, they will let the superintendent know that they need representation.
Yes.
Okay. That's pretty easy.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Michelle, are we good?
I believe so.
Okay.
I, may I just bring up something again?
Yep.
I'd like it if, I, I'm not totally comfortable with a one-person warrant committee, even though I know we could do it. Would you speak to our architect friends there and see what their recommendation is?
I...
I think that's also gonna be solved, once you are able to go into their dashboard every day, you're gonna see where the spend down's occurring.
We will. I will, we'll get that information.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of copy.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, can, can we revisit that? Once we get information, in case we want to have a regular committee rather than one person?
And it's also because of all the questions we've had over the past couple of years with community. And I just, as I mentioned, I think to Julie, I just know when I was on that committee, it did a break, I think proximity at that point. And I could learn from the two other people who were seasoned and alive. It was Carl and Dennis.
Okay.
And anybody here is...
Yes, we're all warrant.
Warrant people, and you can go in and look at the warrant, so.
At any point in time.
At any point in time.
Anytime.
Anytime.
No, I know, it's just, I know I wouldn't want to be that single person.
Okay. Okay. Vote to approve consulting work agreement with Dr. Regobito.
Should we clarify what is it about?
Yes.
Well, I mean, why don't you get a, do a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
So I had asked for some help as we went forward, both post-transition, and then in the interim, before we knew we were going to be working with Open Architects, I came to Arthur and to Kim and asked that I be able to consult with Beth in issues of budget, knowing her strength as a school business official and a superintendent. And as Bonnie said earlier, they have been working incredibly hard to try to help solve this gap of a problem that we were facing. And given that it's not my first budget, but my first budget in Massachusetts, I would like as much help as possible. And so, I don't remember exactly the terms, it's no more than, help me here, it's, it's two June 30th. No more than 30 days, hours, hours, days, 30 days. Build hourly, so if I reach out to her and say, hey, can you help me explain X, Y, and Z? She is there and we are, we, the school committee is paying her for her time.
And to clarify.
How do I do?
Clarify its budget.
Correct.
Business.
Right.
Only.
No, right. May I just add that in speaking with Art, because we have this issue of minutes from personnel and negotiations, and Beth was the superintendent in that, during that period of time, and has notes. I asked Art for permission to use a couple of hours of those 30 days with Beth to get the added information we need in those minutes. I am not looking forward, I will not have us in a position where we do not have complete minutes for that committee.
Okay. Carl?
Yeah.
My recollection is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the daily rate is something approximating $824. And so that would mean the hourly rate is a little over $100 now, $103 now approximately.
Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate. Yeah, that's accurate.
And we really, before the end of this, it was so many eyes trying to get our previous business company to get things done on time. So it was crucial that she could look over the things, because they were giving us wrong information, so...
Several times.
Several times. So now, hopefully, we can move forward and it did get done on when it was supposed to, at the end.
And it was submitted, yep.
So everything is submitted, everything is correct, and we're moving forward. As of, as of tomorrow morning.
And also, after we wrap this up, we'll talk about the community night, if possible.
Yes.
One other point I think would be good to clarify, that as Beth was the business consultant here, that Brian does have an MASC mentor.
Yes.
Which is to, who is a totally separate person from, from Beth offering that.
Right.
And it turned out to be someone kind of locally known, which was, was kind of exciting.
Terry Thomas.
Terry, Terry Thomas, her husband Jim taught math here for many years.
Right. She's an interim...
Gil Monahan.
Gil Monahan, yeah, left from Amherst, yeah, superintendent in Amherst.
So just, so we're totally clear, other than the few hours that Bonnie needs, Beth is just looking over our finances when we need her to look over our finances. Now with this new company, I hope that...
It's less and less.
Less and less, and once we get all up and running, we should be good.
And this is as needed, right? So it says 30 days, we may not need 30 days.
Right, correct.
To be clear, yes.
And do...
So, so, she still has in no way used up the time that was previously contracted.
She has by now.
By now, yeah, that's done.
Finally.
That's done. Amy?
Do we have any ideas, maybe how many days' worth of this could possibly be necessary? Or is that really impossible?
Not until they start.
Right.
And until we get him adjusted to a mass budget.
Hmm.
Because you've got to remember, he's Rhode Island and Vermont, totally different. Formulas are different, a lot of things are different.
Yeah.
So...
Hard to know.
So relying on Beth more heavily right now, once Open Architects comes in slowly morphing out?
And I was very candid with TJ, that this would be my first Massachusetts budget, and he didn't go running.
But we all, as town people, like those nice little budgets, so we want to keep it in that area.
Right, I want to be confident that what I tell folks in March, I understand and believe.
Yeah.
So, that's important.
And we want to make sure all the district's needs are met, and that we're not missing anything.
Exactly.
So...
Okay. Carl? Oh, voting, yes, 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 Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Julie? Amy?
Yes.
Arthur, yes. Thank you. Approve overnight trip to New York City, Miss English, would you?
So moved.
Whoa, yeah, no, that's right.
Do I have to abstain? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And what do I need to talk about?
No, I don't need to talk about it. They should hear how wonderful...
Sounds great.
We would love you to talk about it.
Do you need more chaperones?
That's what I...
What, Drake?
I'd like to thank Michelle for squeezing me in. Uh, because I, it was, it was Tech Tech Day, and she squeezed me into this meeting so that the, hopefully this trip can happen. So I have done this trip before, pre-pandemic, I did it a few times. This is a little condensed version of it. So what, this is the Jasmine, the Jasmine meets before school two days a week. It is a graded class, they do get credit for it. And the Jasmine is finally kind of growing, we've got about 13 students in the class now, which is, which is nice, so we're, we're, we're growing. And so this trip is going down to New York City to see a rehearsal at Jazz at Lincoln Center with Wynton Marsalis. And I love this because anyone can book a ticket to a concert and see a polished performance, but what they're gonna go do is they're gonna go to the first rehearsal of, of these guys with Wynton Marsalis and see what it's like and what these guys talk about at their first performance. And so it's not, there's not a conductor, each, each member of the band arranges a piece, and then they're all like working together and running through the rehearsal together and talking about, play it like this, we want the style to be like this, and, you know, saxophones, can you, you know, play it like this, and da-da-da-da-da. So they're talking and conversing, and that is what the students are gonna hear. They're gonna see what it's like when they walk in the room and what they do with their instruments when they warm up. Whereas my students are very sleepy when they walk in, and they're lucky if they put their instruments together, even both of their instruments are very tired. So I, I really love for them to see the rehearsal, and that is what they want to get out of it. They want to do more than go to a rehearsal, of course, they want to go ice skating and do other things. So since we're going on a Monday, they said, can we go the day before? I thought, well, it's a Sunday, it's just a weekend day for me. So we designed a trip together, so they're gonna have the choice, they put the rest of the trip together, as hopefully you read through it, some of them want to go to the Natural History Museum, some of them want to go to the Met. And I said, what else do you want to do? And they're like, shopping, ice skating. And I said, okay, let's do something else musical. So we looked at Broadway tickets, and I said, remember, your parents are paying for this, be kind, it's the holidays. It's, Broadway's expensive, so we looked at, Jazz in Lincoln Center has a club called the Dizzy Club. It's for ages eight and over, it overlooks Columbus Circle, and it's jazz music every night. It's a much cheaper ticket, the ticket is like 15 to $25 for students. There is a $25 like drink and food beverage, but that will just be their dinner. And there's, I was shocked how excited they are to go to a jazz club. They are so excited to go to a jazz club and like have dinner and listen to jazz music. They're more excited than going to Broadway. So they're really pumped about this trip, they all want to go, and honestly, almost every parent wants to go, so it's... Yeah, no kidding.
A wrong school committee members.
They, so I've done a, I did a preliminary like feeler, they're, they have to turn in their permission slips, and I definitely have enough chaperones to go. I just didn't want to book anything until I got your okay. But they will be meeting Wynton Marsalis, the jazz musicians come over and talk to him. In the past, the drummer will even take our drummer and like, come sit next to me, it's, they're just so great. One time, they even gave him a 10-minute lecture on why using your pencil is important, and I'm like, oh, thank you. So it's a really great educational opportunity.
And I'm sure you're not looking forward to it about yourself.
Yeah, this is only for the students. Oh, yeah, well, I can go anytime, because I have family that works there, but yes, no, I just love seeing them experience that. Fine.
Have you, you have any shortage of funds? Do you have any fund to which if people wanted to contribute, they'd be able to?
I think...
Do you have any students who might need assistance?
I've not heard from any parent that they're worried about the fund, but this trip, I think, is inexpensive enough that we will be okay. We just did a pie fundraiser, so I think from that, we'll be fine. If any student wants to, is gonna be short on money, we'll be okay.
Is that what my pie is from?
Yeah.
Well, that and the, the, the trip next year to either Disneyland or Tennessee.
Yeah, the, the trip next year, which I'll see you guys later in the year for that. That one is where we need more grant work, but this one, it will be inexpensive enough.
So I'm so happy you're doing it after hearing how the students could not believe their previous experience. These kids, you'll have 30 kids in jazz band, hopefully.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was, that was my concern, with 13 kids in the jazz band. And I know you were preliminarily filling out all of the paperwork, and it said 10 to 12. So I just wanted to also make sure that all kids had a way, like, we were sure that they weren't not going because of...
From one, one child will be out of the country, so I brought down to 12, and I had only heard, not heard from one, but the parent already reached out and asked, they, they're going, so the other 12 are going.
Okay.
So they're all, yeah, they're all on board.
Right.
The, the concert is also, just in case anyone cares, it's Duke Ellington in Africa. Duke Ellington played a concert six years ago in Africa, and I guess it's a famous concert, so they're gonna get to hear. I asked them if they knew who Duke Ellington was, and only one child raised their hand up. So we're gonna talk about Duke Ellington a little bit.
Okay, thank you very much, sounds awesome.
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
We have it.
We already have it.
We have it.
We had a second, we're good.
We're all set?
We have it.
So Carl? Yes.
I don't know if I can...
No.
No.
Yeah, probably not.
It's abstained.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
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 Julie?
Yes.
Arthur, yes, awesome.
Great, thanks, we'll send pictures.
That's good, yeah, Amy Courtney.
Review and approve SBR, SD superintendent search feedback survey. So moved.
Second.
Yes, in your packet.
Well, the results, the correlated, back to us.
So this is actually a survey that's gonna go out to everybody in the community to briefly find out what the feedback is on their superintendent search. It has nothing to do with the community members and the committee. This is just a survey that'll go out.
So was this survey, is this like a template from MASC?
Yes.
Yes, so they will insert Southern Berkshire, not, you, it's not gonna say...
Well, I was just gonna say, it's not a town school committee, I'm just, so it'll say Southern Berkshire School District.
The questions will be, it's not gonna see, your town school committee, no, it'll say...
No, 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 but it'll be customized. No, I, do you know if the information will be aggregate? Or can it be broken out? Like, I can go through and I know that it's, you know, I'll pick on town administrator, because there's only four in the whole district. So could, you know, a monory administrator, then I know, then I'm gonna know individual responses after that?
MASC receives this.
Or...
Yes.
We don't receive this. This is a farm.
You don't get it.
We do not get that, and then they, they...
They will synthesize it?
It's compile the data.
Compile it all.
So do you know if, like, even in that first category, okay, you, you know, you're a student, you're a graduate, you're a resident, you're a staff, you're a school committee member, can you check more than one? Or do you have to check?
I don't know.
I mean, that, that was...
Once it's loaded, I guess we could find out.
Well, because, because these things can be tweaked, so that you can, must choose one or all that apply?
Well, you could always put other and then just fill out what you all are.
Well, but you see what I, you see what I mean?
A lot of the questions, I think, indicate that you could select more than one, like which characteristics or strengths. But it'd be good to confirm, I agree to confirm.
I agree, because some of these...
Maybe she can fix the template and say, check all that apply.
Would you like to be able to check more than one?
Yes.
I think so.
Yeah, because like, I mean, majority of the community members wear more than one hat here.
And let's see, and how many, how many, how many, for instance, staff members, but let's just go for faculty right at the moment, how many are currently parents and are graduates and are residents and are teachers or support staff, right? You know, I mean, that's, right?
Well, there's Jesse.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, I was kind of thinking about Victoria.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And our folks here too.
I know, that's what I'm saying. But we got, right.
Yeah, and then I think a lot of our staff have kids in district or they came from here.
Really important because like I would be, you know, I think for, yeah, former parent, like, yeah.
And I have some questions on.
And I think that's one of the things, that's one of the strengths about the district.
Go ahead.
Um, in terms of when this will be issued, do we have time to submit feedback to the ad hoc committee?
She, Liz LaFond is looking for us to approve this because as they start to get applications in, the survey also has to be submitted.
By when?
Well, the applications are due by December twelfth.
December twelfth, yeah.
And I don't think we have another school committee meeting between now and.
We do.
The eleventh.
The eleventh.
Yeah.
Well, I think we're hearing that there are a few of us who have comments about ways this might be adjusted to meet our needs.
Can I offer a suggestion to help us? You could convene the ad hoc search committee in the interim before the next school committee meeting to hash this out.
Yeah, we were going to anyways.
Yeah, I'm just, like, on number five, there's some of the wording and phraseology that feels very awkward to me. Some of it seems redundant.
I think that's getting awfully, I think we have to be careful about getting too, this is, this is just sort of getting it up.
This is a generic.
Yeah, I know, but if the question, if the statement is awkward and doesn't make sense or could lead to confusion.
Which one are you looking at?
Well, a couple of them. Commitment to recruiting, developing, and sustaining a culture of collaboration. You recruit a culture of collaboration? That doesn't make sense to me.
And maybe people that you place within district that help with your collaboration?
Right, and who you've involved.
Yeah, but it doesn't say, I, I don't know, I'm just saying.
One at a time, whoa, 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 whoa.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this isn't our survey. This is a survey someone else is doing, right?
However.
It's for our district. It's a reflection of us.
So.
If it's not meeting our needs, we need to, we're paying for this as a service. So I think if we're saying, you know, just from the very beginning, parent of current, I assume we'll want it to say district, not our individual towns. So I think that there are a number of issues that, you know, we want to address.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Since there's not a lot of meetings and stuff like that, maybe we take this home. Have an edit it to our liking, everybody, individual, whatever. Email them to Art as head of the ad hoc committee. And then we can convene the ad hoc, go over them and make the adjustments accordingly so that we can get a message.
Can you give us an electronic copy so we can comment?
I'm sure we can, right, Michelle?
Comment on it.
Yes, of course.
So that, so that we can put the edits in.
Yes, of course.
It'll be easier for you.
No, exactly.
What would, what would, my, on number five, since it's all characteristics, we could check off, you could check off almost all of them because, you know, we want the, the perfect person that can do everything. But it, would it be better to rank number five? Like, what's your top, what's your second top, what's your third top? You know what I mean? So you can say, oh, a lot of people really said this was first choice, but they also like second, third, five. And, you know what I mean? Would that be helpful in terms of, sometimes ranking can give you more information.
Do like the top three. Instead of trying to rank five, you could say, what is the top three most important characteristics of a superintendent for your district?
Well, no, but I, that, and that was my concern as to, do we select more than one? Do we rank them? I mean, I just would like to know the parameters on this.
Questions that we gotta work on.
Yeah, I, I'm interested in those parameters.
I'd like to let Michelle speak.
Let's, can we, can we select a deadline of when to get all the comments back to you so we can convene the ad hoc school superintendent search committee and discuss it there, make a decision?
December second.
You want to Tuesday?
That's a Tuesday, and we'll meet on the fourth.
Just, well, it depends what time it is, but Tuesdays for me are very difficult.
That's just the deadline.
No, that's the deadline for the survey. Which will give Art a few days to look at it and stuff and get, or us, and then we can get to the ad hoc before, a week before the
school committee.
In case we have to make changes. So I'm just thinking of.
I think you, candidly, you should do it quicker. Because if the.
We got Thanksgiving holidays.
I get that, but if, and this is just observing, if the applications are due on the twelfth and you're just submitting the week before.
What's one day of ad hoc?
Well, it could be saved by Monday.
The first.
So this is Tuesday because people are usually, that's why I said the second.
I mean, if you could get it done over this weekend, you could get it to Art early next week.
Like get it, get it to Art on Tuesday, whatever November, next Tuesday.
That would be the twenty-fifth, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Yeah, twenty-fifth. Because if you want feedback, you want to get it out, at least a couple of weeks before the applications are due, I would guess.
Oh, yeah, we definitely need to get it out.
Yeah.
You could say Monday, I don't care. What, I mean, I like being able to get the feedback.
So then we could meet.
The second or the third.
You could meet the second or, right, or the first, whatever.
Yeah. Amy, you had your hand up.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I think this is, how is this being disseminated to everyone?
Michelle's gonna do electronically through an email, send the survey out so that you can give feedback.
And Brian will announce it in a newsletter.
I probably won't.
No, this is, well, this is afterwards, after we edit and everything like that.
Oh, no, I mean that this is coming.
Right, he'll, or he'll just send out an email, a blurb, whether it's newsletter or just a blurb.
So is this just going to the school, school community?
Parents, teachers, whatever.
So no, not, not just a plain old, sorry, it's not a plain old resident, but a just.
Probably, probably, yeah, but probably everybody on our email list associated with our district.
Nine hundred and fifteen people.
This will be going out to. And this isn't the end all, say all either. This is just a general idea of what the school community is looking for.
It's intended just for the school community then?
Well, I thought it was for everybody who lives in the five towns.
Correct, but.
Yeah, it's for everybody in the five towns.
So it's a matter of how we get it out so people in five towns get it.
So it'll go to all the town clerks? It'll go to everybody in school messenger? It'll go to all our faculty and staff?
The clerks then would send it out to a resident who is not connected.
However, they post the agendas, to get the agendas out there in the same way that they would disseminate the survey.
Okay.
Bonnie?
Two things. One, with questions like three and four, my experience in designing surveys is because it asks you to write a word or two, those tend not to get answered and they're very critical. Might we look at, and maybe Liz has an example of putting in five or six different characters?
I was gonna say multiple choice, maybe?
Yeah, given the way we have it in the others, so giving, you know, five or six and then doing Art, what you said, rank the top three. And then just leave a room for comment.
Right.
Just be, I also, I agree, I was just gonna say, how do you go through like thousands of comments?
Have you done like Survey Monkey?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, my suggestion is if you have comments in that area, you should get those to Art. And then the other thing is when we did a survey previous with less superintendent, we also contacted separately the towns, the libraries, the senior center. And for people who still cannot use electronic, will we accept a print version?
How do we get them to list?
And I don't think so. I don't know.
I don't think we get them to list.
Can somebody do the data entry? I mean, like the senior, the libraries or something?
So we might want, your committee might want to ask and find that out. Because we had a lot of people who said, I want to, but I don't have my own computer. So you might want to ask if we distribute it to those places where people congregate, will we be able to get, accept responses either electronically or paper? But I think we should distribute it, you know, I remember we dropped more, for some reason Monterey sticks out. We dropped off a stack for them and they just left it out, you know, in that counter area in the town.
How would they get them to us?
Excuse me?
How would they get to us?
The town would say, I've got, you know, like twenty-five of them.
And somebody goes and gets them.
Right.
Okay.
Call us up.
Actually, better off at the senior center than the.
Well, you, you know, whatever way.
That's where they are.
But we really do want to encourage.
I'll, I'll let's lose them pushing.
Save the turtle bumper stickers from like four years ago are still sitting on that table.
Hey, I found our newsletters there. They never were put in nail knots.
Nope, that's our town.
So is the decision to get feedback to Art by Monday? This coming Monday?
Tuesday.
Midnight Monday.
Midnight Monday?
I don't know. Is that all right?
Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
Fifth?
Fifth.
Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, whatever that date is.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we might, we have to have a add that.
We'll get back to schedule. I mean, unless you.
We can talk about it during your update. Sure, right next.
Um, so it's basically Jim, Nancy, Carl, me, and Art finding a scheduled time that we can get together.
A ninety forty-eight hours note.
And forty-eight hours from Michelle.
And.
Start thinking about it.
And don't conflict with the performance.
And when do you want, and.
Or the transit.
So the idea of this would be to get the information to Art on the twenty-fifth. Do we want to meet December first or December third?
I cannot do the first because I'll be coming back.
Second.
Second I can, or third.
That's the one I can't do.
Okay, I can do the third.
Carl?
Can you do the third for ad hoc?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
After Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Jim? How are you? What time?
Five, five-thirty?
Doesn't matter for me.
Doesn't matter.
I'll be coming in on Zoom, so it doesn't matter.
Jim?
I might be coming in on Zoom.
Yes, you want to do five, five, when do you get done as well?
Huh?
When do you get done?
Five-thirty is better for me.
Five-thirty is better for me too.
So let's do five-thirty.
Five-thirty. Five-thirty on the third, yes.
And we just have to make sure that we have, oh, wait a sec, how are we gonna get an agenda? Will that, if we get an agenda in on Monday, it'll be perfect. Okay, that's.
I, yeah, I can get it for the Monday before, it's on.
Yeah.
December first.
But.
Okay, that gives us.
We can give her an agenda today, we know what it's.
No, 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 I just want to make sure that she can get agenda out on December first for the third.
FYI, I can't make that day. Just, not, not that it matters because I'm not in the committee, but I'm not able to make it the third or the fourth.
Which means one of us has to take notes.
We can take notes.
Yeah.
And we call it out.
Okay, are we good? Okay, let's move on.
So we are, we're, we're withdrawing that motion then to approve it.
Correct. Uh, do I have to make a motion to table? I make a motion to table that motion?
I don't think we can.
Okay, withdraw that motion.
Right, it's easier. Bonnie?
I, I make a motion that the school committee approves the final decision of the ad hoc superintendent search committee. We agree to that.
I second.
How about we approve withdrawing the motion first and then do by his motion?
I thought they already did.
No, so I, I, I make a motion to withdraw the motion of accepting the survey.
You don't have to vote on that.
We don't have to vote on it.
Okay, so that was made. Do we need a second though?
No, not according to the parliamentary cheat sheet.
No.
Um, so I, my motion is that the school committee is approving the actions taken with regard to the survey by the ad hoc superintendent search committee.
I second that.
Discussion.
My reason is that we do, we do it so that we have, you have an approval in order to get this out in a timely fashion before the close of the superintendent search.
Anybody have any, anybody else have any comments?
No.
Do you guys, do you have any comments on it?
Okay, yes. Kim?
Yes.
Bonnie? Kim? Nancy?
Yes.
Miguel? Julie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Art, yes, okay. Derby College update. Thank you.
Hello, this is a quick update. My last presentation was on June twenty-sixth. So it's been a little while. I think on, at the June twenty-sixth meeting, I was announcing that we were looking forward to working with UMass Amherst to put together part A of the early college application. So as of right now, I'll start with a, a quick program snapshot. Early college is fully operational right now at Mount Everett. We have around fifty students actively enrolled in seven different college credit courses right here on campus. That does not include our students taking BCC classes. So everything that was scheduled is, is running. Our early college partner, Simon's Rock at Bard College, has confirmed that all the credits the students earn are recognized by the Massachusetts Department of Higher Ed. So they're recognized by the early college system and the Massachusetts DHE. And they will continue to do so in perpetuity. So for as long as we would like to continue working with Simon's Rock, they've been a great partner. And so even as they transition to New York State, the Massachusetts Department of Higher Ed recognizes their credits that are, that are being earned here. So this is considered a planning year for adding a second early college partner, and that's UMass Amherst. So they will be our only Massachusetts-based higher education partner. I reached out to our liaison at the UMass President's Office to let them know I would be providing this update tonight. And I said, do, is there anything you'd like to share? And she said, please share the commitment of UMass at both the Amherst campus and system level to our partnership. So she was like, that sounds great to me. We, you know, we see this being a really long-term partnership and I think it's going really well. We submitted our part A application to the state in September. We are still waiting to hear back. We were told we should expect a response or an invitation to move on to part B in October. But we haven't heard, but none of the schools have heard. And being a bit delayed is kind of typical for this type of like program application process. So stay tuned. I, I was hoping to be able to announce whether or not we were invited to submit the second half of the application. But I feel really, I feel really good about it. So the next step would be submitting part B. And then the final decisions get made, they said in January, but we could expect them to be made by the spring. And that's for the formal designation status. I think, yeah, we're building a really modern model for rural education here. I'm really proud of the work that the school committee and the encouragement and the support of the school committee. We continue to operate as one of the state's only wall-to-wall early colleges. We have the continued support and encouragement from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Department of Higher Ed. Um, they know about this school, about this program. They're really excited to see that work continue. They've expressed that to us directly. I guess I'd like to, I'm wondering, does anyone have any questions or was looking for a specific update?
Sorry, and you know, um, question one, what is part B, assuming we get it, what does it give us?
So it's the opportunity to answer a whole bunch more questions. We have a copy of those questions. But it's really, it's asking about, um, what impact we hope to have on our students. It's asking about what classes, where the classes would take place, how they would be scheduled. The good news is, we already pulled off most of the really difficult stuff, which is we figured out how to have college credit courses happen during a high school day. That's where most of the districts kind of get stuck. So, um, we have a plan for how classes meet, where classes meet. Um, we have the model where we, um, we have our faculty here at the district teaching the majority of the college credit courses, and we don't expect that to change. I think it's a really important component of our program design here. Um, hope, we hope that continues to expand with our new partners. Um, but it's a lot of, it's a lot of describing your plan, planning your plan and describing your plan.
Okay, second part of the quest, oh, second question. Do we still have more teachers engaged in getting certification for teaching?
Yeah, so the, um, right, this year, we have, um, an early college professional development pathway. We have different themes that the faculty members could select into, and we have, um, we have folks in the early college pathway, and they're like continuing their work with, with respect to their certifications, and we, I think there's an ongoing process for existing certified instructors to submit new courses for accreditation and approval as well. So, um, that happened with a few of our instructors. They were certified, and then a year or two later, they submitted a new course, um, they designed a new course and have that, you know, getting accredited by.
And do you find more, I mean, my experience, going back to New York City, was that the teachers love to be able to develop a course that they couldn't teach in a regular curriculum. Are you finding that's the case here?
I think so. I can't speak for the teachers, but it seems like, yeah, I, I would like to think some folks are having a lot of fun with it.
So I'd like, if, if possible, sometime in the future between you and Jessie, to find out, because I'd love it to know that it's enabling our staff to be more creative in ways that they want to be and help our students take on, you know, that. Have you, do you have any more feedback from our students, both those who've graduated and had credits and those engaged now?
Well, right now, I have, you know, anecdotal feedback, but if you want me, and yes, we do collect feedback, but I didn't have it prepared for tonight, partly because I wanted this to be a quick update in a, in a kind of lengthy meeting. But if you all have specific information you'd like to see, um, we asked a lot of different questions really regularly. Like, we've asked, uh, kind of pre and post questions of most of our students every year or every semester, and so there's a decent amount of info, but I didn't have it, I don't have it quite ready to go.
Well, I'll just say what I, I would like to be able to see.
Okay.
Is for those who've now in college, how did this experience or the credits, how has it benefited them? How has it changed? There are, us, you know, it could be everything from saving them money to be feeling they were better prepared. So if you have the ability to survey, I'd love to know that. I don't know of anybody else, but those are my questions.
Amy?
I have two questions. The first is you mentioned that there's fifty students that are actively enrolled in seven college courses, not including BCC classes, and I was wondering if you happen to know how many students are enrolled in courses that are duly, um, I guess, recognized for credits at BCC?
At, at BCC. Um, and when I say BCC, I also mean BCC, MCLA, a couple other colleges that support asynchronous remote learning. It's a handful. The number dropped a bit when we implemented the early college program because students preferred the in-person course-taking. Um, I don't know the exact number, but it's, I want to say, you know, under ten per semester.
And then, um, maybe I have another question. Um, UMass Amherst, what is the, mm, I guess, percent? I don't really know how to, where does the percentage of the credit, the transferable credits, maybe within the state, but also outside of the state, how transferable are these credits?
For, um, community colleges and University of Massachusetts schools, it's one hundred percent.
Okay.
The, that's the agreement the state had made, so if we're doing early college, the credits have to transfer. They don't have to, they don't necessarily transfer within a major, um, so it's, you might get to a school and have to take their specific class that they designed specially for their program. But the credits themselves are, they're college credits, and they're college credits anywhere at any community or state school in Massachusetts.
Okay, and do we, you have any idea outside of the state?
So I've been keeping track and contacting every college where our students get accepted. And the transfer rate is well over ninety percent.
Oh.
There are some schools that have credit trans, private schools that have credit transfer limits. They set an arbitrary number limit. Um, so that's been, that's gotten in the way for a couple students, but they were able to kind of use the courses even though the credits didn't transfer in. They did meet prerequisite requirements, they were able to get into more advanced courses, so they still saw the benefit. But for the most part, yeah, very transferable credits.
Sweet.
That's cool.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lani.
Thank you all, thanks, Lani.
Okay, uh, finance committee update. We don't have one yet because we're just rolling off a new block. Unfinished business. I don't have any unfinished business. Uh, I'll get to it in future agenda items. Anybody have any unfinished, anybody? Okay, let's keep going. Subcommittee reports. You've heard all the finance that we can give you for tonight. Community relations and public school advocacy.
This goes to everybody in the room. You guys, too, please, take a look at, uh, go, take a look at the Rural Schools, um, MASC Rural Schools Subcommittee website, so you know where to send your calls for financing us. I think that, um, I want to say that I know everybody does not like getting all the mail that I forwarded to them. I was a little bit disappointed to find out that they get, they just get ignored, especially because they are saying on them that this is about funding, this is about upping the voices of the rural schools. Please, when I send these out, do take a look at them, because most of them have links that you can just click on, and it tells you what to do, all right? And I, this is critical. I mean, when we're talking about not, you know, not getting even basically even twenty-six percent of what rural schools should be getting for the near forty thousand kids, this is shocking, absolutely appalling, and it's up to all of us to do that. So with that, I have Miguel kindly took on for the April newsletter, talking about how to do this, how to where the link, who to contact to do this. I don't think anybody's touched it. I think if we could pull together a workshop, um, you know, just sort of a workshop, um, and just shop it, sit with people, show them what to do. You know, that's for those of us on the committee, it's for any parents that are out there, it's for you to take a look and put the links into the, into the newsletter, it's for you guys to just, yeah, really step up and be just plain vocal. This would be for the town, you know, that's gonna be for the select boards, this is, these are your FinComs that can be doing this, but you guys can be doing it, too. Explaining why it is important that we get funded, what the reasons are that the funding is so disparate to the urban and suburban districts. The information is all there for us to tap into. The Rural Schools Subcommittee, MASC Rural Schools Subcommittee website's great, and I will keep forwarding stuff, and if any faculty members want, uh, me to put them on my list of those who get forwarded to on a regular basis, please listen, please give me.
I have a question. Nancy, do you know if that rural subcommittee, the people that were speaking at that awesome conference, have they ever drafted a template letter?
Yes, regularly, regularly, that's all this stuff I've been sending.
Is it, there is the template letter in what you just forwarded?
In everything that I sent you, everything that I've sent since last year.
Every time. Every time.
Okay.
Since last year.
Well, it's like there's so much that sometimes it gets lost, like, but I think maybe just pulling the template out.
I can't, you can do, you can do that. You can go through it, you can click on it. I already spent enough time, sorry to be bitchy about this, but I already spent enough time trying to pull the stuff for the community advocacy. I've been writing letters to all the, we got Paul Mark to, last, in two years ago, we got Paul Mark. Because of my witchiness, my endless emails to him, go from some fifteen million dollars, God, that was so generous, to seventeen million dollars two years ago, all right? And on a regular basis, you will, I will send you emails from MASC that are saying, so in this bill, these are the line items that need to change. I just copied and pasted and said, "Hi, Paul, me again," for each line item, and God bless him, he went through each one because he knew it was there. We didn't have to do that for Smitty. But when you, you know, we have Joe Commerford and Natalie Blaze, those are for Pioneer Valley. Those are the reps for Pioneer Valley. They're busting their tails for, for education, for rural funding. You've got access through the Mass state government website. You can get to everybody easily in terms, I mean, and it takes literally, you know, it might take, once you've done a copy and paste, and you've done your, you know, copy and paste of the template, and if you put your own blurb in, if you're me, of course, I put my own blurb in, everybody needs to know my stories, but put your blurb in, you don't have to, but, you know, they really probably don't read them, except for Paul Mark. Put me on speed dial, it's like, you got it, I don't know how to do that. Um, but yeah, it's really important. It's, it's just so important. And, uh, another thing that came out today that I forwarded to, no, I didn't. He sent it to us directly. Um, Jason, whose last name is gone, uh, MASC president or past president, he sent out a fantastic, absolutely fantastic letter to the entire school committee, all school committee members, saying, "Please, my urban and suburban, urban and suburban colleagues, talk to your representatives. Send your letters supporting funding rural schools." When I say this is, this is demographic discrimination, it absolutely is. And I know it's a pain in the neck, I hope you like my toning down my language, anybody who knows me. But, you know, it's really, if we don't, you know, if we don't advocate for ourselves, if we don't make the efforts, if we don't teach people how to do it, like I said, you know, probably Monterey, nobody in Monterey probably got the newsletter because they get put on the pay table.
I got a great, I got mine.
But, you know, we can do, we can do, when there, when, when issues come up, like the Student Opportunity Act stuff, that we're not getting any funding for, right? We can workshop it.
I, I have a question of...
Because if I can do it, anybody can do it. Remember, guys, I, I, I'm, I'm not a good reader.
Why were the newsletters dropped at Town Hall not at the post office?
Don't look at me.
That's what I want to know, because they, this is the first year that they've never gone to the people in Monterey. Usually they go in the post office.
I, I, I don't know. I don't know. We've, we've had some mailing issues in the past, so.
Because nobody goes to Monterey Town Hall.
I didn't hear the question. Could you please repeat it? What was the question? See, the question was in Monterey, that the, apparently the newsletter in April, the budget newsletter, did not actually go into the post office boxes. It got dumped at the, I don't know, placed at the Town Hall.
I didn't know that. Quick, quick, we're supposed to send them out.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, what's his name, Reeve Stanger?
Right.
You mean Trish?
No.
Uh, Trish Mead is the one that runs Quick Ground.
Well, I deal with Jay, Jay Reeve Stanger.
Jay.
That's the family.
It's the family.
Okay, that's who, that's who sends it out.
But usually, usually they get dropped at Monterey Post Office and shoved in the box.
That's what they should be.
Yeah.
So can you let him know this was the situation in Monterey?
So in Monterey, they just got dropped off at Town Hall?
I guess so.
Oh, don't look at me, I don't know. Is that a fact?
I don't know. I...
No, I'm just saying, I thought you had said that, that...
I didn't say that.
Oh, 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 all right, so I don't know, then, I don't know, I don't know. Did you get it in your mailbox?
I did, but I got, I, I think everybody who's associated with the district that has a mailing address with the district.
Then it was fine.
Got it.
Okay. Yes. All right, then we're fine, then we're fine.
So I was gonna say, I didn't understand why it got dropped off at Monterey Town Hall.
I thought you said-
You're lucky it's open.
I misunderstood. Yeah, right. Yeah, no, we had an issue in the Marlboro.
Okay, okay, let's...
So anyway, we had new-
Are we good?
We kept mailing, yeah, anyway, we're good.
Okay.
And talk to me about- Do I need to call someone?
No.
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 We are good. So I like your workshop idea, so you guys can work on that.
Yeah, we will work on that, and I think it's something that, um, yeah, we can definitely work on it, and maybe one of you guys could work on that, too.
Personnel and negotiations?
Policy?
Policy?
Carl, all right, so I'm, I'm, I'm not going to give a policy update, because there's really nothing to say. I have to contact Liz to find out her availability. Hopefully, she will have something in December, but she's been under the gun. There, uh, let me make the motion, and then hopefully it will be approved, and then I can explain why we have an immediate issue with an open meeting law complaint. So I move that we, that the school committee, uh, tonight, uh, address an open meeting law complaint that was recently filed by, uh, against this, this, the full school committee. And if, if we approve that motion, uh, I can, I can give a very brief, and I'll, I promise I'll, I'll make it as brief as I'm able to, which is not that brief, but, 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 uh, um... So anyway, I make that motion.
I second.
I second, yeah.
Okay.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Be brief.
Okay, I'm gonna try to be brief.
Three minutes, Carl.
Well, okay, uh, an open meeting law complaint was, uh, was, was filed for, uh, in essence, for failure to produce m- meeting minutes for two meetings. The, the, there's an interesting legal issue here, and I can be very brief about this. The committee, uh, if you, uh, if you recall, and it was relatively recently, authorized, uh, the chair to write a letter to Marie Caymans on an earlier open meeting law complaint she made, and then she's made another one. The interesting legal issue is that Ar- Arthur, our chair, wrote to, and we authorized him to do this, wrote to Marie Caymans and said, she had asked to have meeting minutes, uh, even if they weren't approved, delivered to her under, under the public records law, which is chapter sixty-six of Massachusetts general laws, and specifically, uh, section ten of chapter sixty-six. And, uh, she, and, and Arthur in his letter said that we will provide this to you within ten calendar days of the request. Now, here's the legal issue. The statute says ten business days, not ten calendar days. Now, the legal issue is, can we, as a committee acting through Arthur in this case, shorten the period of time? And the, I mean, and I, I have done, I've handled some way back in the day, fifty years ago, for the Justice Department, litigation under the Freedom of Information Act, the Federal Freedom of Information Act, the Massachusetts public record law largely tracks the Freedom of Information Act. I'm past my three minutes, I know.
No.
And, uh, and, and, and so the question is, can the, can the committee shorten the time period? Well, the answer is probably yes. It can't lengthen it, because that's set by statute. We can't make it, if the state stat, if the statute says you've got ten days to respond, we can't make it twenty. But if it makes it ten calendar days, can we make it, I mean, if it says ten business days, which it does, can we make it twelve ca- ten calendar days? And the answer probably, and the answer to that question is probably we can. Be more stringent, more strict than the Commonwealth gives us the allowance for. But we have to be clear on that. So, uh, I mean, my recommendation is, one, is that we correct that, and we have, and we have our rule, our internal rule, be consistent with the Commonwealth's rule. Two, and, and two, in addressing the immediate complaint, one, I think it's incorrect that she su, that she made a complaint against the entire committee. She should have made it. She should have made it, and I'm sorry, I apologize for this, but I'm not Marie Caymans. She, she should have made it against you as our RAO, not against the full committee. No, on November sixth, she asked for the, for the, for the minutes of two meetings, October twenty-fifth and November fifth. Now clearly, on the November fifth, when she asked for it on the sixth, by any standard, she's premature in asking for it. So that, our response, in my view, should be that we deny that. If we use the ten business days approach, she is also premature on the October, on the request for October twenty-fifth. So her, her, her open meeting law complaint is untimely. It has no basis, in fact. And I think it should be denied on that basis. But we have to clear up this timeframe issue. And, and, and then I think we should clear up one more thing, but I, and I think Michelle knows this, because we've talked about it before, and in fact, we've talked about it quite recently. If Michelle believed, or whoever our RAO is at the time, believes that the request cannot be complied with in a timely fashion, there's a very relatively simple out. She writes to the person who's made the request under chapter six, and says, for whatever reason or for no reason, work, pressure of work, whatever it is, I don't think we can comply with the production of the documents you request within the period allowed by law. I ask for an extension of X days, ten, twenty. That protects the RAO, that protects you, because it doesn't, it doesn't appear, because it's not true, that you've ignored it. It says, I've looked at it, I understand your request, I'm not denying it, I'm just saying that I need a little bit more time. And I think that that covers you, certainly in terms of the Attorney General sanctioning you. Okay, how much pay on the three minutes did I go? What, twelve?
About twelve. I don't know, but this is why you shouldn't retire from school committee.
So, so in any event, I, 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 I think that, well, she, she asked, Marie Caymans asked in her letter that she said she couldn't be here tonight to make a comment or to present it, but we all know, has everybody received it? I assume everybody's received it. Okay, that is my suggestion about how we resolve it. If, if, if we vote to reject the complaint, putting aside the, the improper respondents, the committee, as opposed to Michelle, and then we'll go on from there. I, I, I think it's relatively simple. We can make...
We're gonna need two motions.
Yeah, yeah, we need two motions.
So first motion is to reject the open meeting law violation complaint against the whole school committee?
Right, well, I'll, I'll, I'll accept that as a motion, and I'll second it. So let's, let's, let's deal with that first, right? Right, Art?
Yep.
Okay. Yes?
Yes.
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 I'm not sure. Can you legally reject an open meeting law request? I, I, I don't...
No, it's not a request.
It's not a request.
It's a complaint.
It's a complaint.
Hasn't it already, didn't she say she already submitted it?
Yeah, she did. We got copies of it.
So can we even...
We're voting at this point.
I'm abstaining. Okay, I, I'm just not clear on that point.
I am too. I'm abstaining. I'm not, I'm also not clear.
Yes.
Okay.
So it passes.
Seven, two.
Yep.
Okay. The next...
I have another motion. That all communication from this whole committee where states that it is ten business days in keeping with Massachusetts general law.
I second that. Is, is, is there any discussion on this? Is there any explanation needed? We're just changing one word?
Yep.
No.
Calm to the business, yeah.
That's fine. I think that was an oversight.
Yes.
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 Okay. Thanks for your patience, guys.
Carl, what is the actual guideline for releasing minutes to the general public? Don't we have a certain period of time?
We, we do, and it's, in my view, it's a little bit too short. I mean, particularly in certain circumstances where Michelle is, Michelle does an awful lot of work. Being the RAO is just one added burden on her. It is not easy for her to do everything she does, plus respond to, pardon my editorializing here, frivolous and unnecessary requests from someone who needs a hobby. She should collect stamps or something.
Okay.
But, but, but back to what is the allotted time? We'll redirect you, Carl.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm not actually sure what it is. I think the word, do you know the answer to that?
Is it twenty days?
Is it timely? Did they use the word timely?
Meeting minutes, according to the law, have to be produced within thirty days in the meeting.
That's right, yeah.
Or three meetings after, whichever is late.
Yeah, yeah, Michelle has that correct.
So it's definitely not November fifth and sixth?
No.
Okay.
But, but the complaint was dated the eighteenth.
November eighteenth, correct. And she has to cover thirtieth minutes in November, but her request, he no request was made November sixth.
Thirty day, yeah.
And if I could point out, Michelle does not take notes here in the, in the meeting. She waits and looks at the video. So it's not as if there are draft notes that she has right now, she could produce. She dedicates time, and I know not to bother her, with the way headphones are on, and she's transcribing meeting minutes. So she's not, not producing something here that she has, because I know that was a concern at some point, that we have to produce draft minutes if they exist. And so in speaking to Michelle, she says, I don't have draft minutes. I dedicate time, I put on the headphones, I go to the recording, and that's how the minutes are produced.
Just in case any of you didn't see it, Michelle previously responded to Ms. Caymans, explaining the process. You were very, you know, apologetic to her, and explained, we were going through transition last, so we're going through transition, this is the process we follow, you're not being ignored. So you have responded to her.
Oh, in the past, of course.
Mm-hmm. On the very same issue, and explained the process in the district, which is totally legit.
What, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just have one comment to make that, that I think is important. The Attorney General is, in, in, in reprimanding anybody under the open meeting law, is primarily interested in a display of bad faith, of an attempt to avoid the rules. This is clearly not a case that involves bad faith. It is too much work, it is, it is a short time limit, it is many things, where whoever is being complained about is very, very likely, unlikely, in my view, and it's only my view, and the Attorney General is not whispering in my ear right now, but if there's, if there is a show of an attempt to comply, and just a time pressure or something like that, no one is going to be sanctioned. At least under the current administration, Massachusetts, that's, that's what I think. So I think, I think, I think no one here, whether it be Michelle or any school committee member, has attempted to subvert the open meeting law, and that matters.
And I do want to say, for the record, I do my best, which you guys know, to get the previous meeting minutes on the current meeting for approval, which we've done tonight. We've approved those two minutes. Did I have them in draft form to send out, but by that time, we already had the complaint, so it's kind of moot at that point.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody.
And I thank you, thank you, thank you for speaking up about this. I really appreciate it.
Okay. Personnel and negotiations.
We are waiting to close out.
The minutes.
The minutes.
I didn't like that for a minute.
I love it.
I've heard that before.
Superintendent Evaluation Committee.
We haven't meet, but met, meet, met, but we will, and now we gained a new member, so it'll be all, all fine.
Okay, executive minutes, Carl.
Um, Michelle, will you provide me with the...
Of course, the list.
With, with the, with the actual minutes?
Sure.
And then I, and then I'll, I'll send out a survey, asking the committee members to agree on a date. It, and it will be a relatively short meeting, I think. So if you'll do that, I'll then contact everybody and see when we can meet. But it should be within a few weeks, and then we'll have it cleared up. We will be up to date.
Nice.
Until you get all the ones from personnel and negotiations.
Thank you. Ad hoc handbook review?
Mañana. Meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
We need to clarify our charge.
Yes.
Clarify what?
The, the charge of the committee, Carl had questioned that we were only doing the student handbook, but we're doing any handbooks, including the school committee handbook?
Well, you're doing the student and families and the school committee handbook.
That's right, but our minutes never reflected the school committee one, so Carl had, you had raised that before we thought you were going away. I don't know if you feel like you want...
Yeah. Um, we, we had specifically created the ad hoc committee to have sufficient amount of time to review, not be under the gun in, in, in approving the student and, and family handbook, because it's important. That's not to say that, that the school committee handbook isn't, but there's no real time pressure on that, because we can, we can, from time to time, review the school committee handbook and make changes of it at any time during the year. So my, anyway, that's, and we won't have a draft of the student and family handbook until when?
Just, yeah.
Go ahead.
So we received, the towns received a, last spring, a petition that was questioning the capa, questioning the efficacy of the school committee. And there was a list of things that we had not addressed in, just that we've just sort of let go by. They're covered in, you know, like Kim does the warrants and stuff like that. But in looking at the school, in looking at the complaint that we received, or the complaints that we received, I feel very strongly that after I reviewed the school committee meeting, I mean, school committee handbook, school committee handbook, that that should be also addressed, that we should just review it, not change it, just review it and see what, see what, see what we're missing. That's all, and it's not a big...
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't take issue with that.
Yeah, so that's just the, just in terms of why it should be added to the charge? What was that? There was a petition with... This was, I got it from...
Well, back in the spring.
This was back in the spring, so that...
What petition? Are you talking, are you talking about the transportation petition?
No, I'm not.
I didn't, okay.
Was it brought to the school committee?
Yeah, it was never brought to, I have never received it.
It was sent to me from the town of Marlborough, and it, so...
The only ones that petition I saw had to do with...
The transportation.
The transportation, and there were subcategories that shouldn't even be addressed here, because they were never founded as truths. So it should never be brought forth here, so...
But we did have a public comment several months ago, suggesting that there were parts of the school committee handbook that was outdated.
No, that I agree with, but that petition thing?
I don't, yeah.
Was full of a lot of false narrative.
There was no question about it.
So it shouldn't really be put forth in this meeting.
But it was, it was, I, what, all I was saying, that I took, went back to looking at some of the, some of the things that were listed, and the things that were listed regarding the school committee, there were some...
I know, I watched a meeting for three times straight of one of those things.
I did, Marlborough too.
And that's why I said, that ethnicity, as you put it, was not ethnicity. I'm sorry, I don't mean to get upset about that, but they put out stuff against a school committee member that was untruthful.
I agree with that.
And that's why I said, I just don't think it should even be put forward. All right, I, I, I agree with you.
All I'm talking to you is that I can...
Oh, no, I, I agree about the handbook.
I can honestly, Kim, I'm very happy to drop it.
Okay, nope, 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 nope.
Very happy to drop it.
I'm sorry, it's just...
We're not doing this. We're not doing this.
Nope, I'm, not either.
I agree with you about the handbook thing.
That's all I need, that's all I need. So Carl's saying that we just need to add that to the, to the, what the, what the, what the committee needs.
That's fine.
That's all. And I think he's right.
You got it.
Okay.
We could play nicely. We've done it before.
Come on. Come on. Ad hoc superintendent search, we're, talked about that? Future agenda items? I have two.
And I have one.
First of all, after the first of the year, we're going, with our new business associates, we're going to hold a information session for all, anybody that wants to attend. Selectmen, finance people, we're going to answer any questions, put this all out, so everybody's talking about being transparent. We're going to be transparent as humanly possible.
We're going to break down the budget, so people can understand the grants we're getting in, the funding we get in, what comes out, our major, we're not going to go into like every little teeny detail of what gets charged to the district, but our major ones, like payroll, um...
Transportation.
Transportation, you know, our big, big things, so that people understand why our budget goes down in great big chunks, but also the money coming back in, the time periods, those money come back in and get certified at. Because I don't think people understand that when we go to town meeting, we don't, we're not a hundred percent sure we have those funds or what that fund is. We're making the best guesstimate as a school district we can to produce a budget. So at that point, people can understand timelines, things like that, and where we get all our information to pass a budget, and that way, everybody understands it, and there is no questions.
That's our goal. That's our goal, we'll be there.
So will there be a finance committee meeting prior to that?
Prior, yes, prior.
To kind of get ready for it? Is that kind of...
And there'll be a narrative and everything, and so, okay.
We're moving in a totally different direction.
Yep. Okay. That's fantastic.
Okay. Second one, we're going to hold a faculty and staff night, open communication, and just to talk about anything you guys want to talk about after the first of the year. So that's two things coming forward after we get through the holidays.
It could be as simple as visions for the district, where you think it's moving forward, where do you think that there's, you know, our kids are struggling? You know, it could be just so that you can be heard.
Anything.
It's not going to be, like, I have a complaint, my job's not that great, and, you know, that's not our area, you know, so I just want to be clear about that.
We're, we're just, we're trying to move everybody forward, and it's been tough in the past, and we're trying something different, so that's what we're doing. Carl?
Um, I've, I've been mulling over what, what Julie's objection, going back to the open meeting law issue. And no, no, Julie's objection is actually reasonably well-founded, and that is, I think, if I'm, if I'm paraphrasing what you said correctly, I think you said, can we do that? Can we reject the open meeting law complaint? And the answer is yes and no. Yes, we can, we did it. Do we have the final word? No, we do not. The Attorney Gen... The Attorney Gen, the open meeting law complaint is filed with the Attorney General. That's the, that's the office that has the ultimate deciding power. We can say whatever we want, but we can't control what the Attorney General does about it, and she and her office can have a completely different view than we do. So I, so I, I, yeah.
Understood what?
It should have been answered at the time, but yeah, that's the, that's the, that's the procedure.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
I have two things. One, I brought this up a couple of months ago, the idea that we put together another one of our famous ad hoc committees, and looking at, it's time for us to look at a vision for the next five years, and we're with our current superintendent, whenever, but I think the school committee has to look at the realities, all the new statistics coming out, in terms of home purchase, et cetera, and what we have is a picture of our school, and we have to, with a, my view is, then get that out into the communities. So we said we were going to have that as a future item, we still have him, so I'd like that to go on. It's time. And the other is, a member of the faculty spoke to me about would I give a workshop, because she knew already two different people who were interested in running in Sheffield, 'cause I've said I'm not running again. And would I do a workshop?
On?
Being a school committee member, what's involved, et cetera. I said yes, and I think it obviously should go beyond Sheffield, so I'd like us to look at setting up a session where, and publicizing it, where anybody who might be interested in running for school committee could get information, and it would be, you know, sponsored by a school, and obviously, I don't need to do it alone, anyone who wanted, you know, to join me in that, but I'd like to have that.
As to a future agenda item.
As a fu, as a future agenda item. So those are my two future agenda items.
So would you want me to ask Liz to be part of this?
No.
Okay.
I don't see, this is us.
I'm just.
Okay, I mean, unless, if you have a reason why you think, but my, my view is.
We'll discuss it, we'll discuss it.
My view is, let's put it on the, an agenda, look at what we want it to be, and then, you know, we might want the mayor of Springfield to go.
He's not a resident.
So you just want a, on a agenda you first talk about.
Exactly, a future agenda item, those are two future agenda items.
Okay.
One has been future agenda item.
Do you have both of those, Michelle?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Carl, you're up.
I'm up?
Yeah.
I don't think you had a handle.
No, he didn't have.
Your favorite motion?
Oh, he is.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, oh, that, that's one of my jobs, okay. I'm, I'm gonna drop off a, a, a subcommittee and to be the adjourning person.
Be adjourning committee.
Second.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I seconded it, yeah.
Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jenny? Jim? Nancy?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Julie? Amy?
Yes.
Arthur? Yes.